Good afternoon, I'm Trenice Riggs. School Board Chair and the administrative informal and workshop session of this meeting of the Virginia Beach, Virginia School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at 4:02 PM on this 20-
10.
10th day of September-
Of October.
Of October, sorry y'all, I'm reading my script and it says September. Because I don't have the right thing in front of my face. You're good, it's me. It's me! It's me, sorry. Okay. On this 10th day of October 2023, members of the public will be able to observe the school board meeting through live streaming on schoolboardvbschools.com-meeting/live, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. Thank you to those that have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Administration Building, School Board Chamber, we have Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Manning, Ms. Martin, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Owens.
And Ms. Franklin is on her way, she's in traffic, but she should be here any minute. School Board Admin Matters and Reports. First, I want to mention that we are back in the School Board Administration Building, and we're gonna be in this room, the School Board Room. There's not as much seating capacity as we had over in the Holland Road Annex. Please be aware that the public seating will be made available on a first-come, first-served basis. If needed, there will be an overflow area available. Members of security are in the building to assist. So I want to thank the public for understanding. Next, there will be two signup sheets being passed around. One is for the October one-on-one meetings with Dr. Robertson, the other signup sheet is for the VSBA Annual Convention in Williamsburg. The dates for that are November 15th through 17th. Please indicate on the sheet yes or no to attending that conference, and if you will be attending the Early Bird Workshop, and if you will need hotel accommodations. The Early Bird Workshop is on the 15th, but the main convention starts, our conference starts, on the 16th. So, that's the difference with that. The School Board Clerk will take care of registration and hotel arrangements. If you have any questions, please reach out to either me or the clerk. Okay, and this is the convention one, and the green one is the meetings with Dr. Robertson. So I'm gonna just pass one each way, okay? Information is with the signup sheet for VSBA, if you want to look through that before you sign up, so you can kinda see. Okay, second announcement I want to make is there's a group of school board members that are gonna participate in a voluntary book study of the book Belonging Through a Culture of Dignity. And Mr. Callen was so kind to bring his book so I could share it. This is it. And it's written by Floyd Cobb and John Krenapple. School Board members can participate in this book study if there are no discussions concerning school board business. So remember, there it is. And I know that six people responded to Mr. Callen when he sent out that email who would be interested. So this is what the book looks like. Okay. Now, the update on the Superintendent Search. The Superintendent Search survey has been extended through this week, okay? We just felt like we need, we could get more survey responses if we added another week, and that we were capable of doing that, and HYA wanted us to do it, so that was good too. They liked that idea. So please make sure we're, you know, sending out as much media information so people will know to please, you know, go on and take that survey. And it can be found on vbschools.com, the website at the top of the webpage, or at www.vbschools.com/about/leadership/superintendentsearch. And there will be, there was only room for one day with one of our representatives from HYA that could do any kind of extra interviews. And that's because, and it's a Zoom as for that matter. So there is a Zoom one going on that has been set up for a group of teachers because they, many of them didn't get a chance to respond, and so that's happened. We wanted more students, we didn't have many students, so that's been conveyed to the principals as well to please encourage their high school students to respond to the survey because they really want to have their input as well. So that's what's going on with the survey. Any questions? Okay, anybody else have anything for Admin Matters? Okay, seeing none. The Department of Teaching and Learning Updates. Welcome Danielle Calucci, our Chief Academic Officer.
There we go. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Danielle Calucci, and I serve as the Chief Academic Officer in the Department of Teaching and Learning. I am joined this evening by our Department of Teaching and Learning Executive Directors, Dr. Kelly, and Dr. Myers Dob, and a team of amazing coordinators from our curriculum teams. We are pleased to join you this evening to share a high-level instructional overview of how Virginia Beach City Public Schools develops and delivers differentiated instruction in response to student data to ensure we address the needs of all of our learners. Before we begin the update, I would like to put this presentation in a broader context. At the September 26th School Board Meeting, Ms. Legata shared preliminary SOL data, and Mr. Delaney and I shared an overview of our school support process with you, in which we reviewed how central office teams provide universal, targeted, and intensive support to our schools. As a reminder, we make division-wide decisions based on data and feedback, but we find the most powerful data analysis really occurs at the school level based on the unique needs of each of our schools. As Mr. Delaney and I explained during the School Board Meeting on September 26th, during these ongoing progress monitoring meetings, school-level academic performance, in addition to other data points such as attendance and discipline, are analyzed by members of the school-based teams in partnership with our central support team leaders to determine what additional layers of support may be needed to ensure success. During that meeting, we also shared we would return tonight to share a high-level instructional overview of how we develop and differentiate instruction. We will also share a few foundational literacy and numeracy data points and show state comparisons for those. These data points offer information on how our youngest learners' foundational progress is monitored. At the next School Board Meeting, you will hear from Ms. Legata again, who will provide an overview of the state and federal accountability system, including the indicators used in the systems and how our schools fared on the indicators. Her presentation will also include plans for addressing the non-SOL performance indicators that are part of the accountability system, such as college, career, and civic readiness indicators, also known as CCCRI, and chronic absenteeism. At that same meeting, I will return to share our plans to provide additional tutoring services, which we discussed at the last meeting as well, as outlined in the Virginia All-in Initiative from the state. Throughout tonight's presentation, a key theme you will hear is strategic alignment. First, this is demonstrated in the fact that our strategic action agenda and strategic framework guide our practices as we work to ensure VBCPS students graduate with the skills and attributes reflected in our graduate profile, and exit our schools ready to be meaningfully employed, enrolled in higher education, or enlisted in our military. This strategic alignment is evident in the high-quality lessons our teachers deliver, which are tightly aligned to the Virginia standards of learning, and incorporate opportunities for students to collaborate, communicate, think critically, and problem solve. As we know, employers are looking for these skills in employees, and we want to ensure our graduates are prepared for the job market that is awaiting them. Virginia Beach Instruction is delivered following our teaching and learning framework, displayed here, which illustrates the cyclical process of planning, teaching, and assessing. Notice the intentional placement of the word "respond" throughout the framework. In order to meet the needs of our students and ensure they are proficient in the standards of learning, our teachers, instructional coaches, and administrators engage an ongoing analysis of informal and formal data within each component of the framework, enabling them to respond to student needs and differentiate instruction in a timely manner. This framework highlights our division-level, school-level, and classroom-level data response approach. From the division level- Did it stop? From the division level, it illustrates how we use the school support process to analyze data throughout the year to allocate resources, adapt curriculum, and develop our professional learning based on teacher feedback and data. It also can show how a principal may notice a trend within his or her school to develop school-based goals for continuous improvement and outline action steps involving coaching, progress monitoring, and professional learning. Teachers use the framework on a daily basis in their own classrooms as they observe and assess student understanding to develop the instruction they deliver to include enrichment or scaffolded interventions to ensure all learners can achieve learning targets. It is important to note, in a division as large as ours, making broad changes for all schools based on overall data is not always as effective, which is why we leverage the docile, detailed school support process. Additionally, the central support standpoint, we must work thoughtfully and consider how much change is manageable at once. This has been a strong point of teacher and principal feedback and is critical to the success of any well-intended change. Some current state-level changes we are keeping in mind this year are the mathematics standards of learning revisions, the Virginia Literacy Act, which will require a textbook adoption, and enhances enhancements to our current tutoring resources and approaches. I share this to ensure it is clear that while we are constantly striving to improve and respond, we also are very strategic in our planning and keep everyone that it impacts in mind. At this time, I will invite Dr. Kelly to the podium to share details related to how the elementary and secondary curriculum teams have worked to develop curriculum and assessment enhancements and provide meaning professional learning this year. She will also share the data points I mentioned on our primary students' progress.
Thank you. Good afternoon. As you recall, from the School Board Meeting on September 26th, our division surpassed the state's reading performance in all grade levels as measured by the Standards of Learning Reading Assessment. I'm pleased to share more celebrations with you this evening as we recently received our Spring Phonological Awareness Literacy Screening, also known as PALS, data from the state. The PALS Assessment is a research-based screening and diagnostic process monitoring assessment used to identify students at risk of developing reading difficulties. Based on the PALS data from the spring of 2023, a higher percentage of Virginia Beach City Public School students met PALS benchmarks compared to the state for all grade levels. Grade 1 and Grade 2 demonstrated the greatest separation from the state. Please note that the 3rd grade Spring PALS Assessment is optional, and generally, schools opt not to test our 3rd grade students, as 3rd graders are required to take the SOL assessment in the spring. Many schools only assess 3rd graders who may be in need at the end of the year, summer, and fall intervention or tutoring. As you may recall, our 3rd graders outperform the state by 9% on their reading SOL, which does provide an overall data point. Although 3rd grade reading was an area determined, would be continued focus for overall division support, as we recognize this is a critical age for students to demonstrate proficiency in reading. Just give you a moment to look at that. When we look at PALS data over the past several years, we have cause to celebrate. Our division's teachers and Virginia Beach's commitment to evidence-based literacy, as many of our teachers, all reading specialists, and many administrators have engaged in evidence-based literacy professional learning, and our curriculum has been updated to reflect these best practices. All grade levels have exceeded pre-pandemic levels. This slide displays kindergarten through 3rd grade results for the spring. Kindergarten continues to be our strongest grade level at 89%, and grades 1 and 2 are not far behind with 82% and 81%. Grade 2 demonstrated the largest gains, from 76% to 81%. Again, it remains important to note that Grade 3 testing is optional. This slide highlights several of the responses made to address English and Language Arts data. New this year, an elementary reading specialist from each school attended a two-day Virginia Department of Ed Reading Specialist Institute in September to learn about the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act and strategies for effective instruction. The Central Office, ESL, OPEC, and Gifted Teams are again collaborating to provide ongoing professional learning to our literacy coaches, to provide comprehensive support with specific strategies to meet the needs of all students, including gifted learners, English learners, and students with disabilities. As Ms. Calucci shared, we're working toward meeting the requirements of the Virginia Literacy Act next year, and Virginia Beach has prioritized evidence-based literacy professional learning and revised our curriculum over the last five years to align the best practices for reading and writing. Evidence-based literacy curriculum materials for Tier 1, 2, and 3 instructional needs have been provided, such as classroom-decodable libraries for kindergarten through 5th grade. Curriculum enhancements and professional learning specific to writing have also been a priority. We've also developed or enhanced curriculum assessments, and we're implementing the Virginia Language Literacy Screening System Assessment, or the VALS Assessment, with the Virginia Department of Ed, which replaces the PALS Assessment. With any system, especially one as large as ours, school-based coaching is critical to the success of any professional learning transferring into practice. We also believe coaching is critical to teachers feeling supported in the complex work that they do each day. Our division's Department of Teaching and Learning, Language and English Teams, and school-based literacy coaches provide in-house support, such as modeling instruction, co-planning, co-teaching, facilitating data meetings, providing professional learning, and teaching small groups. I will share two examples of the curriculum revisions made in the area of writing instruction. At the elementary level, many lessons have been created that include explicit writing instruction lessons and practice opportunities for students. Here, you can see a screenshot of an example of updated curriculum resources at the elementary level. The resources provide students the opportunity to write in response to what they have read, which also builds their background knowledge for the science content covered in that grade level. Teachers work with students, review writing, and provide feedback to ensure the design allows us to address writing difficulties by engaging students in the joy of writing and providing them with explicit writing instruction, all while immersing in important science content. These independent writing activities for grades 3 through 5 were also created to provide additional exposure to complex science standards while building our students' writing skills. Within these lessons, students use a variety of writing skills, such as forming ideas, staying on topic, using correct grammar and punctuation, organization and text structure, while accessing science vocabulary and content through reading and writing of nonfiction texts. As Ms. Calucci shared, at the last board meeting, our 5th graders engage in a yearly local writing assessment and are assessed by their teachers in partnership with school-based literacy coaches and specialists using the state's writing standard rubric. Here's a secondary example of updated curriculum resources. After analyzing data and gathering feedback from our English teachers and literacy coaches, curriculum enhancements were made for the 23-24 school year. At each grade level, the scope and sequence of written composition, grammar, usage, and mechanics were aligned to the benchmarks in order to determine students' mastery of skills throughout the year and provide reteaching opportunities to address any gaps. Exemplar lessons were also created to serve as model lessons for teachers. These lessons include an inquiry, learn, and practice phase, small group instruction, application of skill, and an assessment component. We will now transition to mathematics. At the elementary level, one of the data points we use to respond to school and students' early numeracy needs is the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program, or the VKRP. A state-requiered kindergarten assessment given in the fall and spring to measure students' kindergarten readiness indicators, such as numeracy and behavior skills. For the second year in a row, Virginia Beach continues to outperform the state with the spring VKRP. 82% of students leaving kindergarten met the state benchmark. This data is helpful for teachers because it provides them detailed reports that guide them to make instructional decisions. As you may recall from the September 26th presentation on SOL pass rates, changes observed in mathematics pass rates were generally positive when comparing the 22-23 school year to the prior year, but we're not yet back to pre-pandemic levels. We noted an area of focus would be grade 7 math. It is important to know that less than a majority of our students take the grade 7 math test, and we saw a 4.4-5% increase last year. We will continue to support this grade level and all grade levels to ensure continued progress. In response to the SOL mathematics data, professional learning and curriculum resources will continue to be provided to ensure teachers have support to successfully plan to meet the needs of all students. Some of the updates this year include kindergarten through 5th grade learning launches, which were added to the curriculum as a rigorous pre-assessment to provide guidance for extensions and additional small group instruction. We will examine one on the next slide. In grades 6 through 12, professional learning is being provided utilizing building-thinking classrooms. It's a model of implementing optimal practices to create the ideal setting for deep mathematical learning through collaborative structures, problem-solving, and real-world application of mathematical concepts. Spiral reviews and data protocols to monitor progress are also provided to support differentiation. Test-taking strategies were added to each middle school curriculum unit. Math coaches are collaborating to develop professional learning that focuses on hands-on tasks for historically difficult skills. And as Ms. Calucci mentioned, we're also in the process of revising curriculum to show future changes through crosswalk resources as required by the 2023 Mathematics Standards of Learning, which were released on August 30th, 2023. As explained, when reviewing the reading and writing instruction slide, school-based coaching is critical to school success. We leverage our coaches in partnership with the Department of Teaching and Learning Coaches to ensure side-by-side support is provided to provide coaching, co-planning, co-teaching, to meet student needs. This is especially critical during a standards-revision crosswalk year in which standards of learning and pacing are being revised. Here's an example of a newly-added elementary learning task. Give you a chance to read it. You are. This task challenges 3rd grade students to synthesize what they know about numeration to compare and order numbers by examining students' winnings in a game of Monopoly. Based on a student's use of pictures, numbers, and words to explain their solution, teachers are able to gather information on a student's understanding of problem-solving, representations, and connections, and reasoning. This provides teachers information to make instructional decisions specific to what students know and are able to do. To be prepared for future-ready and to increase rigorous rich tasks, these tasks are provided as secondary mathematics as well. This is an example of a 7th-grade rich task. I'll give you a second to read this one. In this task, students will determine how many cupcakes were sold and how much money is left over for spending money in order to develop mathematical understanding of operations with rational numbers with real-world connections and opportunities to collaborate with peers while problem-solving. This task is designed to deepen understanding of operations with fractions, decimals, and percents as it relates to consumer applications. Our final two curriculum-focused areas are science and social studies, and we will now transition to that. In response to SOL data, professional learning was provided via summer essentials and will be provided on an ongoing basis to ensure teachers have quality resources and are supported in strategic planning to meet the needs of all students. Keep in mind, the science standards were just recently updated by this date, so our teachers have recently engaged in newly-updated curriculum for science, and the updated standards were assessed for the first time last spring. This year, elementary professional learning has continued to focus on exploring best instructional practices in science and implementing them effectively and with fidelity as we just recently revised curriculum. K-12 professional learning support has included an emphasis on vocabulary strategies, effective practices- effective practices for students with disabilities and English-language learners, and planning lessons with balanced and aligned inquiry-based investigations and explicit content instruction. At the secondary level, additional focus has been included to advance and model literacy strategies. Resources and professional learning have been provided to ensure students can enhance literacy skills through reading rich-science-content-based articles and informational texts balanced with experiments and hands-on learning. They then infuse writing using evidence to support claim with data. Assessments have also been updated to reflect the science and engineering practices and rigorous technology-enhanced items students will need to interact with on the standards of learning and to ensure students are able to apply understanding of a concept to solve a problem. The work of the Department of Teaching and Learning Team for Social Studies continues to focus on the cornerstones of inquiry and critical thinking as we strive to develop the attributes in the graduate profile and ensure our students become reasonable citizens with a deep understanding of the social studies standards of learning. After analyzing data and input, we developed a variety of professional learning sessions for instructional staff throughout the summer months. These sessions had a variety of aims, including skill development, clarity of the rigor of the standards, best practices for use of the updated resources developed specifically to enhance targeted skills and courses, and how to utilize best practices in assessment. We also have provided professional learning to increase student engagement in lessons. Assessments were updated to reflect the rigor and content in the standards of learning and ensure students can interact with content in problem-solving manner. An emphasis on standard alignment, new instructional and content resources, balanced assessment, and using data to inform instructional decisions has been the focus in secondary. Now, I will transition to OPEC, and I will invite my colleague, Dr. Myers Staub, to share at this time.
Hi, good evening. It is important to remember that students with disabilities are students first. All the information shared previously applies to students with disabilities also. Throughout the presentation, the partnership between OPEC and other offices was highlighted to demonstrate the continuous and intentional collaboration to support coaches and teachers in meeting the needs of all students. Additionally, OPEC provides professional learning opportunities for special education teachers. The Special Education Teacher Cohort is a hybrid training and support opportunity offered each month. Teachers may attend face-to-face or virtually when it best fits their schedule during the day. Although specific topics are planned for each session, teachers are also encouraged to come with their own topics or questions, since coordinators and instructional specialists will be there to support them. Various professional learning communities have been organized for specific teacher groups this year. The Elementary Cross-Catégorical Self-contained Teachers Met in September and participated in small-group stations addressing behavior, visual supports, scheduling, and specially-designed instruction. The Adapted Academic Foundations, AAF, and Functional Academic Foundations, FAF, teachers also met in September to learn more about the differentiated levels of support and the unique learning system, which is an online program, to address the needs of students based on data and performance. Two IEP writing workshops were held in September to assist special education teachers in developing individualized education programs. IEPs identify services and supports for a student's disability to ensure access to and progress in the general education curriculum. Goals and services are provided in the least restrictive environment to build essential skills that will facilitate participation and progress in the general curriculum with their non-disabled peers to the maximum extent appropriate. OPEC also continues to offer Crisis Prevention Institute, or CPI, verbal intervention training for teachers who are not able to complete one of the sessions this summer. Since sessions were capped at twenty participants, twenty-six essential sessions were offered this summer. This blended learning experience includes an online course and participation in a face-to-face session where teachers learn about verbal de-escalation techniques and physical disengagement to manage unsafe behavior. By teachers learning these techniques, they are able to verbally de-escalate disruptive behaviors and prevent further escalation, which allows students to remain in the classroom and not miss valuable instruction. To promote consistent implementation of the requirements of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, professional learning essential sessions have been scheduled during this school year for new assistant principals who oversee special education as well as administrative assistants. This year, professional learning will focus on a back-to-the-basics approach to ensure administrators have a solid understanding of the processes and regulations that drive special education. These trainings will ensure students are identified appropriately, and IEPs are developed with the necessary supports and services to address the students' needs. OPEC is committed to improving outcomes for students with disabilities. The trainings will emphasize mechanisms to ensure students with disabilities are receiving a free, appropriate, public education in the least restrictive environment, and teams fully understand the many options students with disabilities have to earn the verified credits needed for a standard diploma. In addition, three retired special educators, two instructional specialists, and one former program-compliance support teacher have returned to support new assistant principals with coaching special education teachers on the development of IEP goals, which address the unique needs of students with disabilities and the delivery of specially-designed instruction aligned to IEP goals. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act American Rescue Plan Supplemental Funds have been used to purchase instructional materials to support students with disabilities in the areas of literacy, math, self-regulation, sensory, and transition skills. Furniture and equipment were also purchased to help in creating classrooms conducive to meeting the academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs of students with disabilities. One unique item purchased was a laser cutter system, which will allow assistive technology specialists to create items to support students with a variety of needs, including motoric limitations. Examples of items include acrylic key guards for large print, large keyed, or standard keyboards, which allow students to rest their hands on the keyboard while typing; acrylic number alignment aids, which allow students to align mathematical work when writing; and acrylic touch guards for our students using iPads with communication apps for augmentative and alternative communication, which allow students to rest their hands on the touchscreen and activate only the area needed to communicate. So the pictures were a little hard to capture what they actually were, so I did bring some samples. And so this is a key guard. This is one of the number alignments. And then this is one of the things you put on the iPad that will help a student to make sure that they press the actual icon that they want to press. And what's interesting is these two were actually created by one of our former students, who was blind, who was at ATC, because they have this laser cutter system at ATC. So we are actually just purchasing one that we will have access to in our building on a regular basis. Okay, so now I'm gonna turn it back over to Mrs. Calucci.
Thank you. As you can see, teaching is not only an art, but it is definitely a science. We are fortunate in Virginia Beach to have so many amazing teachers. As Mr. Delaney shared with you, on September twenty-sixth, our division's leadership is committed to inspiring growth and continuous improvement of instruction through a coaching approach to provide effective feedback and empower teachers to reach their professional goals. Much research suggests today's workforce is actively seeking employment with employees who value their strengths, know and support their goals, provide opportunities to grow, and give feedback that is meaningful and empowering to them. Our ongoing feedback is essential. We provide it regularly to ensure students have the best quality education and that staff feel very supported in their day-to-day interactions. The Virginia Board of Education provides and requires eight standards be evaluated, which grounds our feedback. Those are displayed here. As you can see, our teaching and learning framework aligns to the performance standards. While Tier One core content instruction is a critical focus, we also prioritize relationships and caring environments must be in place as well to ensure students feel safe, valued, and cared for while they are in our keep each day. In 2021, the Virginia Board of Education added an additional standard, Standard Six, Culturally Responsive Teaching and Equitable Practices, which addresses the importance of students feeling a sense of belonging and building strong relationships with all stakeholders. The state's definition under Standard Six for Effective Culturally Responsive Teaching and Equitable Practices is displayed here. Virginia Beach teachers, staff, and administrators have been committed to fostering welcoming learning environments, which are respectful to all cultures and utilizing instructional practices that are inclusive and inviting to all learners. Effective practices under Standard Six include utilizing strategies within learning experiences to engage students in collaboration during instruction, using resources that are respectful of differences, establishing meaningful relationships with all students, and disaggregating multiple data points, such as academic performance, attendance, and discipline data to identify appropriate classroom instructional responses to implement for the success of all reporting groups. Authentic student, family, and community engagement that cultivates relationships is also emphasized within Standard Six. As you might expect, many of these examples lived under standards that were previously existing, such as learning environment prior to Standard Six being added. Student academic progress, professionalism, instructional delivery, and learning environment were the standards many of these criteria lived under. By fostering inclusive, collaborative, and welcoming classroom environments, we are able to provide the highest quality of education and support acquisition of the traits and skills in our graduate profile and increase student proficiency in all content areas. While our comprehensive, interdepartmental approach to school support and the process of teaching and learning encompasses much more than I could have reflected in these slides, this slide provides a brief summary of some of the greatest enhancements we have made for the 2023-24 school year, along with our targeted and differentiated approach to providing ongoing feedback, coaching support, high-quality professional learning, and allocation of resources to ensure tutoring and differentiated support for all learners. We hope this update on our comprehensive approach to planning, teaching, and assessing was helpful to understand how our division's instructional coaches, teachers, and administrators partner to respond to student needs on an ongoing basis to ensure positive school outcomes. We look forward to returning on October twenty-fourth, when you will be provided information related to state and federal accountability indicators, in addition to the update on how we are enhancing our current tutoring plan in alignment to the state's all-in-tutoring recommendations. At this time, we are available for any questions you may have.
Let's go on it.
So, we have a strong focus on evidence-based writing in the early grades? That's not new.
No, however, we have enhanced our practices. So about five years ago, research really began to emerge, and some of you, I think we've had conversations, I've had personal conversations with a few of you, that this is how I learned. I learned phonics in the classroom, and so some of that is very familiar to us, depending on the approach that was trending at the time that we were in our primary years in school. But so much extensive research has now emerged that Virginia Beach, the Language Arts Team at the elementary level, really first began digging into it, analyzing our curriculum, looking at assessments, taking advanced levels of training with the state and through letters and things like that, that we noticed some gaps. And we weren't satisfied with our PALS data about five years ago. And since we've been implementing revised approaches and more researched-based approach to writing, even letter formation in kindergarten grades and pre-K, we are seeing a difference. Now we are seeing an uptick in that PALS data, as was demonstrated by the previous slides.
And the writing portion too. So I think it's easier to teach kids writing when they've read a passage, and their writing samples are going to be based on what they read, instead of, I know they're gonna get prompts later on that are just like something. But this allows a student to really, just kind of, and it merges the reading and the writing, and I've always liked the evidence-based, and I know they use that a lot.
It used to be the science of reading, and now the state, really, with the Virginia Literacy Act, wanted to adopt the term evidence-based literacy. And so that's the term, but science of reading, if you were following that prior, it's the same approach. But there is a strong focus on that foundational, not only decoding, but encoding, which impacts the writing. And so by really making sure our youngest learners can decode, we are giving them the gift of literacy, which transfers to their reading and writing.
Ms. Manny?
Well, I want to give a huge shout-out to all of our PALS instructors. They're doing a fantastic job. They are passionate about what they do, and it's showing through in this data. So, great job. I had the opportunity to visit Brookwood Elementary School at the end of last school year and was just really impressed with some of the things that they were doing there. They were using some grant funds that they had, that they really advocated for. I know their principal was very adamant about getting those funds and did a great job. I think they were using Orton Gillingham. And so I had mentioned this to Dr. Spence, and I don't know if it got translated through, but if we can maybe get some data, or have you looked at data compared to what Brookwood has done, compared to what other schools have done, because I've heard that they've had some pretty great results?
We can absolutely do that and get feedback. The trainings of letters and Orton Gillingham and evidence-based, science-based literacy, they all align. There's different resources available within different components or different approaches to the professional learning and a lot of overlap, but I think that's a great thing that we could do.
Great, thank you. And then just one last question. I love the idea of retired educators coming back to, the special educators to train our principal, assistant principals. I know several years ago, that was one of our shortfalls, and I think we have really corrected. I mean, we just assumed all of our APs knew everything about special ed. And so I have seen them coming up to speed, and I'm getting better feedback about IEP meetings. Have we identified retired special educators who are willing to come back and do that?
We have. So, and we've also identified, from the school leadership approach, we've really followed the research on principal and administrative coaching as well. And we have a lot of newer administrators, so we also are providing support to school principals on their role through a coaching model.
Great, thank you so much.
Mr. Callen?
Madam Chair, this is really more directed towards you, and it's not seen as a criticism as much as it is a request. These are wonderful reports, but the material is covered rather quickly. And as I've witnessed my own experience as being on the board, I'm better served and can be of better service if I've had an opportunity to familiarize myself with the material in order to acquaint myself with the concepts and then be in a position, when it's Q and A time, to offer reasonable, intelligent questions. So my question or request, and again, it's not a criticism as much as it is a request, would it be possible to obtain these sorts of reports before the meeting so that we can get a running start and have a sense of acquainting ourselves so that when the report is delivered, it's something that we're somewhat familiar with in advance?
Thanks for that question. Dr. Robertson, can you please help us?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Callen. So certainly we can. One of the things that we try to do with these workshops is provide you the most up-to-date information. So it is not unusual for us on Monday and senior staff to be going through presentations, workshop presentations that we're gonna give on Tuesday, so that we can have the most up-to-date data. We can certainly provide documents from workshop in your agenda materials on Thursday with the watermark draft, recognizing it's a draft. And it may or may not be the complete set that you're gonna get on Tuesday. Now, if the board is comfortable with us cutting- Now, if the board is comfortable with us cutting off the information and maybe providing an incomplete report during workshop, we can certainly do that too. I don't think that's really the purpose. Normally with workshops, we're giving you information that you're not voting on, so we want to give you the freshest information we can. So we have two choices here. The board can give me some direction. We can either provide the workshop materials on Thursday with draft recognizing they're likely to change somewhat before Tuesday, or we can give you what we give you on Thursday, it will not change and it may or may not include all the information we wanted to provide to you had we waited until Tuesday to provide it. So either one is fine with me, just need some direction.
Okay, so we, Ms. Martin, and then we'll go back to what Dr. Robertson asked about. Ms. Martin?
Okay, so I just had a question. I was looking at slide seven, really impressed with these PALS score in kindergarten. My son went through PALS tutoring in advanced English now, but what I'm worried about is the federal childcare subsidy ends in 2024, $48 billion. And so how are we planning for fall of '25 and fall of '26 knowing that more and more kids will not get access to pre-K services when those funds expire? Are you looking that far forward and how we're going to maybe do some early fall assistance for those kids that have never been in a curriculum setting for pre-K?
For pre-K or kindergarten?
Well, for pre-K.
The kindergartners?
Well, for the last four years, we've had quite a bit of money invested into pre-K, even private pre-K childcare centers and all of that. Once that funding expires, we're going to lose a lot of pre-K preschool spots. And I'm concerned in that we'll start to see a drop-off in incoming phonetic ability, incoming reading ability. And so we'll have to do quite a bit of curated work early in kindergarten to get them to passing by spring. Or is there a plan to kind of hyper-focus on that in '25 and '26 yet?
Well, we really have been committed to expanding pre-K every year, so that has not changed. We can definitely research more of the impact with Ms. Pate and her team to ensure we are still working towards that goal of expansion. We use three different funding sources right now for pre-K. So we have some locally funded, some is funded by Title I because of the VPI doesn't fund it all and that's how committed we are to pre-K. And we do believe it's making a difference, to your point. So we looked at other ways to add more seats and we're currently doing that already for next school year, but we'll definitely investigate further.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you for a thorough report. My question has to do with culturally responsive teaching and equitable practices. And this this question came up during our PRC meeting recently and can you give me an example of, just off the top of your head, an example of what might work, what you're looking for when evaluating teachers on culturally responsive teaching and equitable practices?
Yes, so the criteria, we tried to make it as concrete as we could. We met with principals, we got teacher feedback, multiple offices came to the table when that standard was released as an expectation because we didn't want anyone feeling unsure or not on solid ground with what someone would be looking to evaluate. And our principals and administrators also get evaluated with that standard. And so one of the concrete criteria is ensuring there are data analysis processes. And so when you're looking at assessment, whether it's informal or formal, you are doing so to ensure every reporting group is making progress and looking and disaggregating the data, not just at overall, but looking down to the individual student level in the classroom. And our coaches do a really nice job of what scaffolds do we need, what do our students who are showing mastery of a standard need because that's really important too. And so that looks at a broad spectrum of needs. So that's one concrete example. Another is we're looking for the opportunities to practice, the traits that you see in the graduate profile. So we want students to exit being able to interact with diverse groups of people that may have different beliefs than them or different opinions. So in a writing lesson, for example, they might be asked to give feedback in a respectful way, how to ask questions instead of saying, I don't like that word choice, what other word choice might you have used? And so they get to actually practice those skills and practice receiving feedback. Yes, you're welcome.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Yes, the PALS test for third grade, is it optional for everybody or only optional for those who scored above the benchmarks in the earlier part of the year?
It's optional at the end of the year because we want to be mindful of, these are eight and nine-year-olds taking multiple assessments. And so a lot of our schools choose to give it because we do such a robust summer learning camp and we really want fresh data, not stale data on those subtests that the PALS provide us that the SOL might not. And so we do that extra layer of support for students that we really need a little bit more discrete data in order to put interventions in place. So typically they're going to assess their below benchmark children at the end of the year.
Right, okay. Excuse me, and also kudos again for the amount of support we're giving our APs in regard to special education. Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, great report. We appreciate all the extra coaching and helping that you are, like she said, with the assistant principals. I do know, do know that they, you know, I'm sure they appreciate it because that's a very difficult thing to learn with the special education and all of the laws and rules and it's, so that coaching I'm sure is very helpful. So thank you. Okay, so Mr. Callen, all right, we need to answer your question or see what we can do. We were given an opportunity or some ideas from Dr. Robertson. So I need to hear from other people what you would like to do. Would you like to get these, this feedback? Ms. Manning?
So, Mr. Hallen, I've had the same request in the past, so I understand what you mean. And I think it would be helpful for us to get the workshop items in advance because sometimes we, it might be questions that we just need to clarify because we don't have the experience and we can do that in advance and save time in the meeting. So I think it would be helpful for us to get just the most up-to-date that staff has at the at the time of that the agenda goes out. And if you have to add things later, that's fine too.
Okay, I see heads shaking with that.
It falls under the category of half a loaf is better than none.
Okay, so, Ms. Anderson?
So are you suggesting that the person who's doing the presenting actually record it along with, just send us, just the hard copies? Okay, that's what I was wondering about, thank you.
And I think, I think everybody was shaking their head that getting what they have at that point and knowing that, you know, if it's not complete, we can, you know, that can be shared with us as well. This is not complete, there will be more coming, but at least getting some of it. So without putting a lot of angst with our administrators trying to get it ready, you know, so don't feel like you have to have the whole thing ready. If you're not ready and you need more time or you need things that'll be coming in and you just haven't got them yet, that's okay. We'll be fine, okay? I just want everybody, y'all to know that, don't want to put that extra pressure without, you know, we'll be understanding. But that's a good question and I know there's a lot of information given these presentations and it would be helpful, like you said. So thank you for the question and thank you for that assistance, Dr. Robertson, and we appreciate it. Okay. Now we're doing closed.
I move that the school board recesses into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings law set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711, Part A, paragraphs 1, 2, 7 and 8, as amended to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Two, discussion or consideration of admissions or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if the student is a minor, the student's parents or legal guardian shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting if such student, parents or guardians so request in writing and such request is submitted to the residing officer of the appropriate board. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Number eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss, A, pending student complaint, B, appointments of certain staff members, C, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, D, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
Second?
Okay. So that motion was made by Mrs. Williams and seconded by Mrs. Melnick. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. Motion passed to go into closed.
In closed session.
... [1052.85]